I would invite you at this time to stand and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I have several things for you tonight. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. I can't hear myself. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I want to make sure that that's going out tonight. So obviously, we're coming in here from another meeting tonight, and so I'm still trying to pull up my board packet on the agenda. So we'll work from a paper copy for a minute. Thank you very much. A couple of things to share with you this evening that I think are very exciting, certainly for the Shawnee Mission School District. And so I'll look now for Matt Johnson. Matt, if you made it into the audience tonight, Matt is over here. We've been talking to you about this for several months, and this afternoon, late morning, early afternoon, we received an email. So Matt, give us an update, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Very excited to announce that we are kind of finalizing the details of a very special partnership between Shawnee Mission Schools and First National Bank that will include a partial financial sponsorship of middle school athletics that will help enhance our programming that we're starting to put in place. And I think it's going to allow us an opportunity to build upon a foundation of middle school athletics at a more exponential level, allow us to do more things quicker and provide things for these kids, you know, greater than what I had imagined just a few months ago. And very excited to have this partnership with First National Bank. They were here earlier today, I think, awarding some business plan scholarships. They've been a great steward in our community, and I think something like this is a great testament to just our community as a whole that when we do these great things, someone like this steps up and says, well, what can we do to help? And Dr. Henson and I are still kind of going through the details of the proposal, so we don't have anything, you know, financially to share tonight, but it is some very exciting stuff, and it's going to allow middle school athletics to really push forward to a higher level than I was ready for even just a few months ago, as I said. So I just wanted to make that announcement.
Great. Thanks, Matt. I appreciate it. Obviously, exciting news for us, and we appreciate the partnership with First National Bank. So thank you for your work, Matt. We appreciate it very much. I have some slides to share with you this evening, and so it's a part of my monthly great things are happening in the Shawnee Mission School District. This past weekend, our school district held its 52nd Annual Research and Development Forum at Shawnee Mission West High School. Students across from the district, and you can see some of their pictures, students across the district shared their work and talents in the areas of science, career, and technical education, social studies, performing arts, and more. It was a very full weekend, certainly for our students, their families, and our employees of exhibits, academic competition, and learning. I had the pleasure of congratulating many students who submitted their outstanding work, and again, some of you were there to view the work as well. The R and D Forum is generously supported each year by the Rainier Family Foundation. Barbara Rainier, along with several members of the board here, were present at the awards ceremony to present the trophies and recognize our students. So again, it's the 52nd year. Many of you there were to see the work of our kids absolutely outstanding. But again, the Rainier Family Foundation, they do a great job of sponsoring this forum every single year, and so a special congratulations to them. Also on that note, I'm pleased to share that the Greater Kansas City Science and Engineering Fair, students from across the district earn more than 100 ribbons, awards, and accolades. Additionally, Brenda Bott, you know Brenda, one of our teachers, who leads one of our signature programs, was presented with the Howard Gadberry Memorial Award for her outstanding work to motivate students in scientific exploration. One of Brenda's students, Andre Fuller, recognized and received the Rainier Award at the R and D Forum and is a finalist, I believe one of six in the entire state, for the Kansas Bio Genius Challenge. Some of you have had a chance to meet him. Genius is very appropriate for this young man. The Washington Post ranked Shawnee Mission East, Shawnee Mission Northwest, Shawnee Mission South among America's most challenging high schools. Only 9% of the approximately 22,000 United States public high schools earned placement on this prestigious list. So congratulations again to East, Northwest, and South. Nine of our students enrolled in the biomedical and pre-medical health sciences signature programs have qualified. And again, you can see there are pictures, have qualified for the Health Occupation Students of America National Competition. So the national qualifiers demonstrated knowledge in a variety of areas such as medical spelling, that's a tough one right there, medical math, and research pervasive speaking. Earlier this evening during our work session, we had the pleasure of congratulating this year's award winners for the First National Bank Business Plan Competition. Awardees of this contract are honored for their ability to develop a business plan that could likely be made into a reality, and we heard tonight, some of these are becoming a reality right now. Certainly, the wooden bow tie is quite fascinating. So maybe next board meeting, Dr. Denny, we should see how that works for us. We'll see. But the 2014 winner of the competition, Dawson, he's a sophomore at Shawnee Mission West. He submitted a plan based on a gardening business. He currently operates in our own community. So he has his own employees right now. He's a student at one of our high schools. And so Noah Marsh from East received second place, and Corbin Tannahill from North received third place honors. So congratulations to these students as well. It is spring. It is almost May, as you know. We are just a few weeks away from graduations. So one of the great things taking place, but we look forward to honoring the class of 2014 during the commencement ceremonies. So many of us will attend in person, and as you know, trying to attend multiple events, and you selected those events, but also our informational services staff allows us to broadcast these on cable channels. Also, individuals can go to smsd.org, and so they can receive students, they can see students receive their diplomas and become high school graduates. So again, I know that's right around the corner. I have been told that in the Shawnee Mission School District, the Board of Education is responsible for the weather at graduation events. You delegate it to the superintendent. Okay. Wasn't aware, so I appreciate knowing that. It's an exciting time of the year, as you know. There are so many events going on at schools, but really some exciting times for us in the Shawnee Mission School District. I know at least one of you spent time at a prom this weekend as well. So it's a great time in the district, and these are just a few accolades of things that are going on. I'm happy tonight, if I can find him as well, Dr. Southwick, you're somewhere in the audience. Dr. Southwick and your lovely bride, Suzette. And so we've introduced Dr. Southwick before, new deputy superintendent, Special Education, Human Resources. And so most importantly, we welcome the great lady behind the good man. So Suzette, thanks for being here as well, but Dr. Kenny and Suzette Southwick, welcome to the Shawnee Mission School District. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Also tonight, we are trying to navigate a difficult issue, but it's a good issue. So we have two of our elementary schools that we're looking at potential boundary changes, trying to alleviate some of the overcrowded conditions. So that process that we're going through right now is looking at different options, variables, double checking data to make sure, does this match other databases that we have, trying to look at the least possible impact on families. I can tell you that's a challenge, and there will be families that will be impacted. But what we're trying to figure out is, one, what is the best possible scenario for the school currently that has conditions that we deem as overcrowded, but also looking at the possibilities that if we take a contingent geographical area and we transfer that area to a receiving school, the impact on that school as well. So it isn't just as easy as carving out an area if that were easy in itself, but looking at the impact by grade level at a receiving school. Sometimes you alleviate a situation at one school, but you might create it at another school. And so over the next couple of weeks, I hope to have all of that finalized. I've had a meeting with one of the site councils this last week. I have a meeting with another site council tomorrow night, and then the plan is to follow up with those groups as well to say, here's what we've figured out, here's the least possible disruption of families. But again, I don't see any way to totally avoid disruption of at least some families, but here's the proposal. And so the process right now, looking at the variables, looking at the options, looking at the data, looking at it by grade level as well, not only on the building that might have a portion of their boundary reduced, but also, again, the receiving school. So a couple of things we've looked at, we thought, okay, I think this makes sense for the building that would reduce a part of their population, but then you look at that same option for receiving school, you're going, we're just creating the same issue on the other end. So it's a great situation in one sense for us to be in. So the process over the next couple of weeks, we'll have it finalized. One of the buildings I met with last week's site council, I go to another one tomorrow night. We'll follow up again with those buildings to say, okay, here's the decision, here's why, here's the information based on the decision. So that's the process that we're going through. So we look at geographical areas, keeping the elementary attendance areas in the same high school feeder pattern. So you're not disrupting not only an elementary, but then a middle school feeder and a high school feeder. So it's just once, it's at the elementary. Looking at contingent geographical areas, but also looking at transfers, looking at special programs that might be in the building, trying to figure out the least possible impact on families. However, there will be an impact on families. You simply cannot reduce a portion of a student population and not impact lives. Trying to reduce that as much as possible is really the goal. So that's the process that we're in right now. Certainly be happy to answer questions about that as well. The other issue I think for us as a school district is how do you effectively gather input from everybody that wants to gather input? And I can tell you what I've received so far. People have a lot of differing viewpoints. And so the issue is, we can't avoid it. We have to make a decision. We'll do that with the information we have, trying to make the least amount of impact as possible. So certainly stay tuned in that regard. Also tonight, very briefly, I want to mention to you the district's strategic plan that we're working on. And so we've taken the input from surveys, from the listening tour, from a lot of our meetings, to really look at the long-term strategic plan. So long-term plan to be reviewed annually. So we're about ready to roll out. Here are the seven themes. So here are the seven major areas we've heard that have been identified, certainly through our community and our employees. Around each theme will be goals, if you will. So facilities is a theme. We've heard that message loud and clear. A goal for facilities would be for the facilities committee that has operated and made reports two of the last three years to reconvene and reexamine that information to see if that's what we want to bring forth. Each goal will then have one or more SMART goals. So a SMART goal is smart, it's specific, it is measurable, it's achievable, results-oriented. We're going to be able to measure and have results, and it is time-bound or restricted, if you will. So the SMART goals for each goal will be time-specific. Here's what we want to accomplish, how we want to accomplish it, through what method, how we're going to measure it, how we know when we've received or achieved those results, and again, here's the timeframe. So we'll be asking for more input. So what you're going to see, rolled out themes, and I think those are probably pretty much agreed upon because that's the reoccurring message we've heard over and over again. Goals, and then SMART goals, which is the real detail of the goals which support the themes. So anyway, the three quadrants in that regard. So that's what I have for you tonight. I started to say briefly, that's not very brief, but under the superintendent's report tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Henson. We will move on to open forum. I'll just read the little blurb about open forum. Addressing the board, at the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of topics under consideration. Patron comments are always welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. And I think we have four speakers tonight. I would ask you maybe to limit your comments to about five minutes, if you could, each of you. If you run a little over, we probably won't stop you, but please try to be concise if you can. Our first speaker is Emily Phillips.
I'll keep this way shorter than five minutes. Hello, Dr. Henson and the school board. My name is Emily Phillips. As a resident of the 75th to 79th Street corridor in Prairie Village, I have been told you are considering forcing my children out of Briarwood. My son excels at school and loves Briarwood. He is active in running club, young Spanish, Cub Scouts, football, soccer, baseball, and basketball. My three-year-old daughter walks her brother into school each morning and is there waiting for him every afternoon. Daily, she points out where she will soon be a kindergartner. I am at Briarwood every day. I help Vanita in the office, Mrs. Nunick in the classroom, and I volunteer countless hours to Mrs. Baker and our art program. My family has contributed time and money to nearly every fundraiser at Briarwood. I am active in the PTA. I have volunteered at carnivals and book fairs, have been on the nominating committee, and I will be the chairperson for the second year of our spirit wear committee, which last year brought in thousands of dollars to Briarwood. I grew up in Prairie Village, and I attended Briarwood. My family moved to this area and purchased our home on the same block that my mother grew up on for the specific reason to provide our children with an excellent education at Briarwood. My family has owned property here, worked here, paid taxes here, and voted here since the 1950s. And we will not accept this proposal. Many of our neighbors, whose families are equally invested in our school and communities, share our feelings. And we will continue to make our voices heard as long as the threat of removing our children from Briarwood continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Our next speaker is Dave Root.
Board, Dr. Henson. After listening to your presentation, I think you laid out why we want to be in Shawnee Mission. I mean, it's an amazing place. I grew up here. I went to school at Briarwood. I went to school at Meadowbrook. I went to school at Shawnee Mission East. It wasn't like that when I was there. The problem that a lot of us have, I live in Emily's neighborhood, is that we feel like things are going on and we're not getting adequate timely information with this. The, I think the idea is kind of summed up in the fact that you were just talking about that you're doing this, but didn't even mention the schools that you're talking about. I mean, we know which one it is, but we don't know the next one. We're just kind of unawares of what's going on. I feel like all of us would like to know. That kind of sums up the passion that we feel about this particular issue. So the questions that I have are, when will we find out? Will it be timely enough to know if we want to make a decision moving forward, moving, something like that? I think the, there's other questions in terms of, you know, what's the future going to look like if you start moving schools around, moving populations around? Do we need more schools in the future? Do we, where's it going to be? You know, Meadowbrook or Mission Valley has shut down. Are we going to need that property again? Is it going to look like we don't have room? Is Indian Hills filled up? Do we have enough ELL programs? Do we have enough room for transfer students that want to go here? I noticed that ELL programs are kind of limited to the southern and western part of the district. Are there plans to put in the north and eastern parts? I mean, Briarwood's the furthest east, it seems to me. Are we, are people that are going to ELL programs being moved further than a school that potentially have an ELL program that would be closer to them? On and on and on. I think these are, are these being considered when you're thinking about shifting populations around? That's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Our next speaker is Jan Burghaus.
Dr. Henson and the board. My name is Jan Burghaus, and I'm at Shawnee Mission West. I'm the department chair for the mathematics department. And I'm here just to voice a couple of things that I think are important to all of us. In 2005, I was the candidate for teacher of the year. And through that process, they were like, gosh, there's not that many Shawnee Mission teachers that have gone that far. So through that process, I discovered there was a mentoring program in other districts. And so I came back, made an appointment with Dr. Kaplan, spelled out that, she listened. And the next year, I had the privilege of being a part of the mentoring for Ron Paplo, who was Kansas Teacher of the Year, and also, most recently, Karen Tredt, who's in my department and a friend. And I'm only saying that just because I think a reminder here that to listen to people in the trenches is important. So here's a couple of little trench talk, okay? I have two fears that I'm talking to you about, and all the right people are in the room, and that is that, you know, next year I'm going to have to generate, produce, score, record, and communicate to parents completely different way. So don't think I'm not on the technology train, because I am all aboard. But my fear is that we have such a, we've got this big aggressive rollout that the excellence in education that is super important to me and to you is in August, I feel worried about. And I just, as a teacher, I want you to know that when I come back in August, if my old toolbox is completely gone, I'm fine with that, as long as the new toolbox has all the tools that work. So I'm just, my plea here is just to watch over that and to be aware that I think your teachers just want to be excellent come fall. Because we don't want the kids to serve the repercussions, and I felt like this was a good place to share that fear. My second fear is special education. As we go through and try to make all these different decisions, in the last two or three years, I farmed out all of my honors and regular classes and took on the lower-level math classes because I wanted to have the face, I knew that when education shifted, the ones that fall through the cracks are the ones at the bottom. So I wanted to know who they were. So I started teaching all the lower-level kids. I found out as a department chair that I had lost touch with some of the realities of special education. And unless you're fortunate enough to have a child or a grandchild currently in the system that has those needs, you know, we'd kind of lose touch of that. And just as we go through the next bit of decision-making, I'm glad to see we've got another person on board that's looking over our kids. I just, I needed the reminder, and I felt compelled to come and remind you that as I'm serving my kids, having the support in place is super important. We all know that special education requires specialists, and specialists are more costly. And I know we're under the gun financially, but, you know, if I, if I have to teach in teaching, which I feel is, I do a really good job with that, but if I have less support or someone is placed in my classroom that has more needs than I can address, then I don't really serve anyone. So I just basically wanted to come forward and say, you know, as we go forward, and for those of us that are visual learners, okay, students, if there's any students in the room behind me, stand up. Stand up, students. Come on. All right. So here's what I'm saying, is that every decision, let's throw it against that wall first before this one. And we need that reminder. I needed that reminder. So thank you for listening and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Ms. Burghaus. Our final speaker tonight is Gabby Case.
Hello. We're here to represent the Shawnee Mission Robotics teams from every Shawnee Mission High School. This is Joe. He's a sophomore at Shawnee Mission South. I'm Gabby, a sophomore at East, and that's Ellie, another sophomore at East. Thank you.
Myself from, sorry. Sorry, myself from West.
For the vast majority of the times, we believe we're underfunded and undersupervised. In the packet, you'll find lots of things that FIRST is a great organization, and people learn so much from robotics. We go out and we do so many things. We go to all the elementary science nights, the middle school science fairs. We sponsor an FLL team at Briarwood, the fourth grade. We go every week when they're in season, and we help them learn. There's lots of scholarships. FIRST is a great thing.
Our problem, though, is we have all those great things with FIRST, and as a team, we do a lot of things. All the Shawnee Mission teams do fantastic stuff. But the problem is, it's an incredibly expensive program to operate for us. So to be able to compete in one regional, which is a regional competition we do every year, a lot of teams throughout the US will do two regionals, but just to compete in one, we need roughly $10,000 to compete comfortably with cost of the robot and cost to compete. And we struggle every year to come up with that, to find sponsorship to do that, and we would love support from the district and from the schools.
One of our associate principals informed us that he believed the district was under the impression that the KC STEM Alliance was helping us to find corporate sponsorships. But this hasn't been true for a number of years, and we've had to find corporate sponsors all on our own. And $10,000 a year, that's pretty hard for a group of 10 to 30 students. So we'd like help with that. We'd like help with support at our competitions. We do two competitions a year currently, one in October, which is more for fun, and then one in March. Regional with 58 local high schools. For comparison, Latha Northwest, that's a great team. They're an aerospace engineering school, so they have lots of money, but we'd like just a little more support.
Just any way we could get more support for our teams, and we could do so much more in the packet. I mean, there are so many scholarships available through FIRST. You'll see some statistics about how the team members in college, just the science and engineering we learn, the business portion of it going to corporate businesses and asking for sponsors. We learned so much with this, and we just wish we could do more.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Thank you to our speakers tonight. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of March 24. Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Bissfield. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 7. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda. Move approval? Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose no. Motion carries seven zero. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of routine business by consent. Mrs. Neber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Any discussion, or any, anything anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? It's a long consent agenda tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. And that moves us way forward in the agenda, down to letter M, action administrative services. Dr. Henson.
We have a couple of announcements tonight, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Chapman and Mrs. Fort Miller if they would make some introductions for us this evening, please.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the new elementary principals. And I apologize, they're out here in the sea, but I'll have them stand since we didn't get a chance for me to locate them. Mike Brewer. Mike is a graduate of Missouri State, where he received his bachelor's science degree in technology education. He earned his master's and educational specialist degree at the University of Missouri in Kansas City. Mike comes to Shawnee Mission after 26 years in the Liberty School District. Following seven years of teaching, Mike served as an assistant principal, a principal, and he's also served in district leadership positions. He's been the executive director of elementary education, assistant superintendent and superintendent. He's very excited to be here, and I had the opportunity to introduce him today at Broken Arrow, so they had an opportunity to meet him today. And he is here with his wife Nancy, and they have been married 30 years. They have four grown children and one very special grandson. So, welcome, Mike. Steve, I'm looking for you. Steve has served as, Yeoman has served as principal at David Brewer Elementary in Leavenworth for the past year. Previously, he has been in Topeka in the Topeka Seaman District, and has also served in 501 as a teacher and as administrator. He's a graduate of Washburn University, my alma mater as well, with a BA in elementary education, a master's in educational administration, and is currently working from K-State on his PhD. Steve is the proud parent of two girls, Kennedy and Elliot, and his wife Courtney is also an educator, and will be starting her job next year in Olathe. They've just recently moved to Shawnee. So, welcome, Steve. He will be at Belinder. That faculty hasn't had an opportunity to meet him. They will get that opportunity Wednesday. We got a preview today. Debbie Schluben. Okay, not the tallest girl in the room. Dr. Debbie Schluben has been with Shawnee Mission District since 1988. She has served as a math teacher at Westridge for six years, and has been the district's elementary math resource specialist for the past 10 years. In that role as a resource specialist, she's worked with teachers and administrators, and has a fine reputation for staff development and enhancing our students' achievement. Debbie's bachelor degree is from Emporia State. She has a master's degree and doctoral degree from Baker University. Debbie is joined tonight with her husband Bill and two children, Brad and Callie. Debbie will be serving at Sunflower. Sho Windling, you got to meet Sho earlier when the CAPS presentation occurred. Sho is, as she said, a graduate of Shawnee Mission South, KU, Avila, Emporia, and K-State. So, I think she's got her, herself spread all over the state. She also brings a unique background experience from Frida Lay in Topeka, where she worked for several years. Not all of us can say that they have worn safety glasses, hairnets, and steel-toe boots for four years, but she has done that. And then she changed her focus and became a middle school social studies teacher at Trail Ridge. She has also served this year as an administrative assistant at Northwest, and has recently been appointed to Marion Park Elementary. Welcome, Sho. Her mother, Cheryl Drew, is here, and her Rosie is here. Rosie here?
She is not.
Oh, she is not. Okay. She's 20 months old. Cory. Okay. Cory is currently serving as the interim at Apache, and he is doing that while our principal is out on leave. And he has also had the experience this year of serving at Westridge as an interim as well. Cory was born in Burn, Kansas. He's from K-State, his bachelor's degree, and a master's degree from Baker University. He has been a long-term sub in the district, and has taught both second and fourth grade at Rising Star Elementary. His wife Lauren is here, Brody is here, and they have a new one yet to be determined, May 25. So, we have a new one on the way. And Cory will be at Rose Hill Elementary.
I have the honor of introducing two new middle school associate principals. Our first introduction is Alicia Grip, and she's in the back. And Alicia will be the associate principal at Hocker Grove Middle School. She comes to Shawnee Mission from Missouri, where she has an experience as an administrator, as well as an English teacher. Alicia has a passion for working with all students and easily forms relationships with others, using strategies honed while coaching basketball, volleyball, and track. Alicia attended Northwest Missouri State University, where she earned her bachelor's degree in English and sociology. She's earned her master's and specialist degrees in administration from University of Central Missouri. Alicia is excited about working in the community where she calls home. She enjoys walks and spending time with 10-month-old Ava and her husband Jeff. Ava's waving. They join her this evening as they celebrate her new position. Welcome, Alicia, Jeff, and Ava. Also with us this evening is Ryan Aldis. Ryan is a CAPS graduate, and he's over here on the side as well. He's a CAPS graduate and has been serving as the administrative intern at Westridge Middle School. Ryan has been a math teacher at Shawnee Mission since 2006, and has successfully worked on planning committees in the district. Ryan has also worked in Kansas City, Kansas, as a middle and high school teacher, following a successful career as a pilot. Ryan is calm, and has demonstrated his flexibility in changing locations and positions mid-year, as well as serving in several different middle schools. Ryan is the third intern to be at Westridge this year. He finally unpacked a few boxes and placed pictures of his family in his office, only to be told he'll be packing again in a few short weeks. Ryan has degrees in aeronautics from University of North Dakota, and master degrees in teaching and educational leadership from Pittsburgh State University. Ryan enjoys spending time off in the summer with his family at Lake Fork Scott. One of his favorite things to do there is to go croppy fishing. He is known for going fishing about 5:00 a.m. in hopes of catching a trophy fish. Has it happened? Not yet. Ryan is joined this evening by his wife Amanda, Nora, age six, Asher, age three, and Corbin, one. Congratulations, Ryan and family. We're delighted to have you here. I'm so, sorry, I forgot to say where he was going to go. He will be the associate principal at Trail Ridge Middle School.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chapman. And now, we will move on to M, action administrative services. Dr. Henson.
We are happy tonight to announce the Shawnee Mission Scholarship awardees. I'm going to ask Dr. Chapman if she wants to comment on these awardees, please.
I would, very much. And if you would come down, Dr. Henson and Mrs. Zila, you get to do the best part. I'll let you two decide who gets to do the check and who gets to do the certificate.
Oh, I'll do the certificate.
Mario Garcia III, if you'll come join us, please.
We'll get the right one for you in just a second. It has your name on it. There we go. Edit off the two. Sorry about that. Okay. Mario is a senior at Shawnee Mission North High School. He's the recipient of a $1,000 Shawnee Mission Scholarship. Mario has been the student body president for two years at North, indicating his strong leadership skills. In addition, he has played high school and club soccer for all four years. He's a classroom leader, enrolling in honors classes his freshman and sophomore years, as well as the international back laureate program his junior year. He is actively involved with Coalition, a school-sponsored group aimed at community involvement, activism, and volunteer work. The student body voted Mario to be named this year's Northman, an honor given annually to the senior male whose students feel best exhibits the true tenets of Shawnee Mission North of trust, responsibility, integrity, belief, and excellence. Mario will attend Kansas State University in the fall. His family members and his principal, Mr. Kramer, are here with him tonight. Congratulations, Mario. William Skug from Shawnee Mission South. William, if you'll please join me.
Will is our second recipient of the $1,000 Shawnee Mission Scholarship. He has a long list of achievements. He's played varsity soccer for three years and served as the team captain for two years. Coach Travis Gatewood considers Will one of the most valuable players in our program's history. Will also participated in basketball, marching band, symphonic band, Latin Club, pep club, National Honor Society, and cotillion, all while maintaining a 4.0 GPA.
Turning the lights down so you can dance. Will is a cadet teacher. I noticed Dr. Henson moved away. Will is a cadet teacher in South's interpersonal skills classroom, where he helps students with disabilities develop social skills. Will plans to attend Drake University this fall and play soccer. His mom and dad, Kurt and Amy, as well as his principal, Dr. Gilhouse, are with him tonight.
Our next recipient is Jennifer Farias. Jennifer is a senior at Shawnee Mission West High School, and she's the recipient of a $1,000 English Language Learner Scholarship. According to her counselor, Jennifer is a determined, self-motivated young woman who desires with all of her heart to become a teacher. She received the grand award at the R&amp;D Forum for the Education Integrated Unit, as well as placed in the top five for teaching careers at the Johnson County Community College Competitive Technology Event. Jennifer participates in Spanish and international clubs, and works at a daycare center after school, a job that she says she loves. She plans to attend Johnson County Community College in the fall. Her family members and her principal, Dr. Julie Crane, are here with us tonight. Congratulations, our future teacher, Jennifer Farias. Abby Prieto Hernandez from Shawnee Mission North. Northwest, I'm sorry, Shawnee Mission Northwest. Abby is our second recipient of a $1,000 English Language Learner Scholarship. She started in Shawnee Mission in eighth grade as an intermediate-level ELL student, mastering the ELL curriculum her sophomore year and progressing to standard English classes. Abby works hard academically, as well as providing childcare after school, and also during the summer. She is interested in law enforcement and hopes to specialize in immigration law and enforcement. Abby plans to attend Johnson County Community College. Family members and Shawnee Mission Northwest principal Lisa Gruman are celebrating with Abby. Congratulations.
Mrs. Zila, I would like to move approval of M1 and 2.
Oh, yes, let's do that. Can I second? All right. M1 is Mrs. Visfield, and Mrs. Mack, second.
I move both of them together.
Oh, one and two. Very good. But Mrs. Mack, come both of those? Yes, please. Any discussion? The deed's been done, so I hope not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Visfield. We'll move on to M3, middle school tobacco, alcohol, drug contract. Dr. Henson.
Since we're going to have middle school athletics, so we have a tobacco, alcohol, drug contract at the middle school level, it is the same contract that we have for our high school students, except it says middle school. So, that's what's before you this evening.
Very good. Okay. Is there a move for approval? And then we can have discussion.
Okay. I move approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Levens.
I'm three.
Is there a second? Mrs. Neber, thank you. Is there discussion? Mrs. Levens.
I just wanted to point out that the, unlike the high school contract, this contract is binding through the middle school years, that if there are infractions, they don't follow the students onto high school. They have a fresh slate. Is my understanding, Mike, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there other questions? Okay. No more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to M4, the proclamation. Mrs. Mack.
I would like to move the following proclamation. Whereas teachers open children's minds to the magic of ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education does hereby proclaim May 6, 2014, as National Teacher Day in Shawnee Mission School District.
Second. Mrs. Visfield, I think I heard first. Any discussion? Thank you to all of our teachers, if we have teachers in our midst today, obviously administrators who were teachers, so thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero, which brings us to N1, authorization to publish notice of hearing to amend the budget, 2013-14 budget. Dr. Henson.
This is our annual notice of the hearing on the amended budget, so it's proposed amended use of funds. So, this is notice of publication, of which we will take up at our May board meeting.
Very good. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. O2, Dr. Henson.
We've had a couple of individuals, actually several individuals, in the school district that have been working on this potential issue for quite some time. I'm going to introduce Mr. Ron Rowe. And Ron, I don't know if you have others presenting with you tonight, but Ron, if you would come and present to us tonight, please. While Ron's coming to the microphone, you are aware that Mr. Rowe has tended his retirement from the Shawnee Mission School District.
I'm not old enough, I know.
You heard that or not, but I won't repeat it. It's a great thing, anytime that someone can retire, and they're healthy, and they have life before them, that's great. I'm not sure it's necessarily beneficial to the Shawnee Mission School District. So, Ron does a great, great job, very loyal to the Shawnee Mission School District. So, Ron, I don't know if you'll be back before the Board of Education in the next two months or not, but if not, on behalf of everyone here in the district, and certainly all of our students, thank you for your service and commitment to the Shawnee Mission School District.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I might add also that in the 15 years I've been here, this is the first time I think I've had the pleasure of addressing them. So...
Got it in there. Glad you said it. It's a pleasure.
So, with that being said, the contract that's before you tonight that's being recommended to Rico Manufacturing allows the district to better control what is being done here in the school district. Right now, just like all other school districts, we have three alternatives for making prints. That is, through our standalone printers, send it to our multifunctional copiers, or multi, actually, our multifunctional printers, and then send it to our print shop. I think I'm going to do this all by memory. And so, let me address how we do printers, okay? First of all, we have like 3,700 printers, standalone printers in the school district. That's a lot of printers, like one for every individual in the district, almost, employees. And right now, we own those printers. The printers themselves are not very expensive, but the toner cartridges that we purchase for them are very expensive. But we have no way to track how many prints we're making on them, and we have no way to track the cost. So, we just know that the printer cartridge is very expensive. The second method is sending it to our multifunctional copiers, our multifunctional printers. We have 186 of those scattered throughout the district. It's all part of a five-year lease that we have with Rico. It's in its fifth year of the five-year lease, that ends in October, the end of October. We know what the volume is, because Rico gives us the volume prints every year, or the reads. We know what the cost is, because it's a fixed contract for five years. We also know we do a lot of volume on. And the third area for our prints, the third alternative, is through our print shop. At our print shop, we have six positions in the print shop. We own most of the equipment that's in there, however, we do lease four of the high-speed multifunctional printers that are in there from Rico, on a lease also that also are at... multifunctional printers that are in there from Rico on a lease also that also is coterminous with the existing walk-up, the 186. They end in October as well. So that's how we're doing it. We know what we're spending at the print shop, we know what the volume is at the print shop. Some of the things that we don't have is we don't have tools in place to help our principals and our department heads, budget managers, to control how that printing's being done. For example, they really don't know the volume and the cost. So with that being said, what we decided to do is ask Rico and Xerox to come in and do an assessment. We offered to do these at no cost, which is great, and they did very extensive. They came in, we asked them in September, and they started doing it right after the first of the year. What they did is they installed software to monitor the prints being made on the printers. And then they went out and also went to the schools. Each one of them went to four schools, two high schools, oh, sorry, two elementary schools, one high school, and a middle school. So a total of eight schools between the two of them. And they also went to the administration building, and they spent 30 days doing this assessment. They went out to the schools, and that tracked where everything was, all the equipment. And they also visited people, and they also did surveys. So it was a very extensive assessment. They came back, and what was very interesting is that their findings were very similar. So we have a high degree of confidence in what they told us we were doing. Took all that information and extrapolated it into what we're doing district-wide. So what we found out, and we found this was kind of, you'll find this very interesting. First of all, we're doing approximately 83 million prints a year, at a cost of about $2.3 million. Now, they also went so far as to break this down by area. For example, the first alternative of printers, we're doing 15 to 16 million prints a year on the printers. That represents about 19% of our total volume. But we're spending approximately $965,000 a year, this is last year's numbers, which represents about 42% of our total spend. On our MFPs, our multifunctional printers, we're making 65 billion prints a year, which accounts for about 77% of the volume, and we're spending $550,000 a year, which represents about 24% of our total spend. At the print shop, we're doing approximately 4 million prints a year, less than 4% of the total volume, and we're spending $775,000 a year, which represents about 34% of the total spend. So we know where our money's going, we know where our volume is going now. So when we ask them to do their assessment, we also ask them to do a recommendation on how we should approach this. And it's interesting because their assessments were very much different. So we adopted the, oh, sorry, the assessments, their recommendation was very different. We adopted the recommendation that most closely fits what our district goals are, and that's the reduced volume, reduced print, and reduced costs. So the contract that we're asking you to approve tonight offers us the following things. For example, it offers us 47 new standalone color printers that will be strategically placed through the district, 242 new multifunctional printers, once again strategically through the district. All this equipment will be supported by Rico. It'll include maintenance, it'll include supplies, it'll include everything except paper. The print shop, what they both recommended for the print shop was that we basically outsource it. And what they're recommending is that they'll provide four Rico personnel to come in, instead of the six that we have currently there, to run the print shop. They'll manage it, they'll operate it, and they'll also give us a 24 to 48-hour turnaround time on getting it back to people who sent it there. Right now, in our print shop, the way that people are requesting jobs for the print shop is that they call the print shop to get an estimate of the cost, then they fill out a four-part requisition, send it to them through the internal mail, and then ultimately get it back. Print shop does a great job, but we don't have the tools in place to really benefit our users out there and to actually encourage them to use the print shop. What Rico will also provide is an online submission form, or software. And on the online submission, what they do is they'll go in, they'll put in what they want, they'll find out how much it costs, if they don't want to do it, they can back out of it, and they can send electronically to the print shop. That's how we're gonna be able to get a 24, 48, maximum 72-hour turnaround time. Part of the print shop, too, is they'll provide four high-speed multifunctional printers as part of this contract. Once again, it'll include supplies, it'll include maintenance, it'll include all costs except paper. As part of this, we will keep, or there's a lot of equipment there that we own. With this contract, it allows to sell some of that equipment. We estimate approximately $50,000 that we'll get back from it. Some of the other benefits that this will provide us is that we'll be able to reduce the printers from 3,700 to 100 printers. So we'll keep 100 of the printers that we have, we'll strategically place those out there, and it's our estimation that we'll ultimately be able to reduce that number from 100 even less. We also, with this new umbrella of control or of operation under Rico, we hope to be able to reduce the total volume of our prints by 40%, which will equate to a 40% savings, which equals about $100,000 a month savings. It'll also mean that we'll have less money tied up in inventory, because right now, we stock all the supplies, at least the toner, for our walk-up copiers, our multifunctional printers in the warehouse. So it'd be fewer district man-hours in supporting our printers, fewer man-hours in doing the warehouse inventory, so there'll be savings there. Plus the fact that Rico's local presence, they're within the district, they're easily accessible, and they have provided us support for the last 10 years. We've had excellent experience with them, excellent support from them. I think probably the difference in what the contract provides as what we currently have is that Rico will be managing all three alternatives. Now, as I mentioned, Rico has a contract with us for the existing MFPs, and that goes through the end of October. They've agreed to forgive those three months if we implement this in August, which is a cost avoidance of $150,000. Okay, it's our intent that we'll start working with the print shop immediately for the transition, if you approve the contract. We'll begin removing printers in June, we'll start removing existing MFPs and installing new ones in July, and we'll live in August. Any questions?
Any questions? Mrs. Neighbors.
Yes, you said if the, if the print shop denied being able to do it, where is the print gonna go then?
If, if.
If they don't take the job. You said they can deny doing the job at the print shop. Is that correct?
What I meant to say was, if they send it to the print shop and they don't like the cost, they can cancel that order at that time, without sending it to the print shop.
I just want to make sure. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Rowe?
I would move approval.
Second. Thank you.
And I might say, your first and last presentation was fantastic.
You did well. Super glad you got it in.
Not only that, but the budget you helped, too.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to O3, Approval of Contract with Patron Insight. Dr. Henson.
One of the items that we have been discussing since early last fall was in relation to continuing to glean information from our community. And so some of you have been involved in multiple meetings with me and others in relation to Patron Insight. What's before you tonight is a potential contract with Patron Insight to conduct a survey of our community. And so statistically, what they do is conduct some community research in relation to questions on themes that we want answers. And so Patron Insight, it's an independent company, it isn't us conducting the research. So they do the data collection, and the budget's really broken down into two things. So as we identify, here are the final themes. They can do 400 total interviews, they can do 500 total interviews, it's broken down by quadrant or section of our school district, asking about those themes. And so the price varies from $16,000 to $1740, depending on whether it's 400 interviews or whether it's 500 interviews in that process. And so their planning meetings with us, that's included in this, the survey creation, the revisions of this telephone survey, they use a company of Kansas City-based interviewers to conduct the survey. They randomly select head of households, registered voters, landline, and cellphone numbers. They tabulate all the responses for us, they manage all of the data collection process through this as well, and you can read through all of those things. They come back to us to say, here is the data that they have collected, here's what's taking place, and here's what your patrons have said about various issues. And so again, I think common themes here, this is an independent company, this isn't us conducting a research about what our community believes, this is an independent company, it is through a telephone survey process. They develop the questions based on answers, things that we'd really like to know from our community. It is broken down by area or quadrant of the school district. They analyze the data, then they come back to a board meeting and present to us, this is what we learned from the community, this is how your community feels about various issues. So be happy to entertain any questions, and I go, again, I know this is something that we've talked about previously, so please feel free to weigh in.
Are there any questions? Dr. Denny?
Is this, when you say broken down by quadrant, is this by high school attendance area, or by city, or by?
That is for us to determine. We can tell them how do we want it broken down. I would doubt we do it by city. More likely, we would do it by high school attendance area. That's the thought process now.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bruegel? Oh, thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors.
I am curious, on our planning meetings with the client teams, yes, that we've already conducted, do we know indeed what it is we're going to be asking?
Some of it is in relation to the themes that we've identified. So in relation to facilities, that might be a question. In relation to signature programs and location, that could be a question as well. So as you know, part of the pondering that we're doing is, do we take signature programs, at least the majority of those, and do we put them at a central location? Those types of questions that we would be asking.
So this would work with the strategic plan, then, is that?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. P, Action. Dr. Henson.
Technology.
Yes.
We've talked about technology tonight. So we have a revised board policy, EGAEA, in relation to the district network and electronic mail. It's the first reading. So we brought several months to you, the first reading of a policy. We've gone back and significantly changed it. That's why we're bringing back the first reading of this policy, even though it's under the same topic, it is significantly different than the previous version. It is very lengthy. And so that's a part of the question that I would ask you to go through as we prepare for the second reading, to look, are there areas that can be combined? That would be great. Not changing the content, but areas that can be combined for readability? Or a format? Is it better that some of the format is in bullet points as well? Again, not changing content, but can somebody pick up the policy and really look at it quickly and say, here's what it says? It will be elaborate, extensive, because of the nature of what we're dealing with, but please look for readability. Readability is a part of that, is quick access, it may be bullet points in that process.
Any questions or comments?
I like the idea of the bullet points and it being easier. I think there's several pages of something, makes it harder for people to work their way through it all.
I think this policy is very inclusive. I think it covers all things that we might run across, as far as our technology use policy here. So I think it's wonderful in what it is, what it does include. We can look at maybe doing bullet points or something.
The, you can edit it, not losing any of what you're saying.
Mrs. Mack?
Dr. Henson, will there be a contract that students, parents, staff have to sign?
Which is a separate form, yes.
Okay, will that be designed?
From this, yes.
From this, okay. And students younger than 18, will they sign along with their parents, so they're aware? Because a lot of students know how to put stuff on their computers, and I'm just wondering, the students will sign, so they will be aware, and the parents will sign?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. That's a first reading, so we need no action on that. Move on to P2. Dr. Henson?
Guidelines that go along with the policy. Again, it's first reading as well, and so if you would, please look at the guidelines in the same context of what we've talked about, but again, guidelines that go along with the policy.
Very good. Any other questions on this? Mrs. Lovins?
Will there be an opportunity, or will there be policies for the computers to be insured, or will these be part of homeowner's insurance? Or is there any?
Mr. DePiero, do you want to address that question?
We've looked into several options for insuring the student devices for next year. Currently, Russ Knapp is communicating with a company called Worth, and they will offer optional insurance for both the iPads and the MacBooks that the parents can acquire when they acquire the equipment. And so that'll be an option for the parent when they receive the device. We have not, at this point, determined that would be a mandatory fee, it'll be an optional fee. The parent and the student will still be financially responsible, whether they take the insurance or not, and I believe it's like $45 for an iPad, and I can't remember the specific number for the MacBook. It's more because of the, a more expensive device. But when they, hopefully, that'll be online, so they can, when they go in to pay their fees and get the computers, they'll be able to sign up for that insurance when they receive their device. And currently, Russ is coordinating that with IS.
And for staff insurance?
Staff, we can offer it for staff. We have made a determination, as far as staff computers, unless it's a negligence issue, you know, it's gonna be an everyday cost that the district would absorb, so if you're sitting at your desk and your kindergarten, you know, bumps your iPad off the desk, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be covered by the district. We're not going to try to hold teachers responsible for those kind of activities. And so unless it's a negligent, something totally, you know, you left it in the backseat of your car with the windows open, and so it's, you know, that's, we're not gonna cover that, but if you're, if you're using it and, of course, your business, and you drop it or if something happens to it, we'll be covering it for staff. And I believe that we've talked to the NEA about that, and that's what they've informed their teachers.
Very good. Did you have a question?
I do have a question. Under General Rules and Responsibilities, number 13, can anyone explain that one to me? Users may only install and use properly licensed software and audio or video media purchased by the district or approved for use by the district. What about iTunes accounts for kids? I mean, I don't know how that.
The intent of that statement is that the user could not incur expense that the district would be liable to pay. So it is not prohibiting information to be placed on there that is purchased by the person that, I don't want to say owned, possesses, but you can't purchase anything off of the internet and then it revert back to district responsibility. Does that make any sense?
Okay. How would someone do that? I mean, other than, because everyone will have their own iTunes account, correct, to be able to? Is that right?
I don't want to tell you how somebody could do that, because everybody's watching.
Never mind. Okay, I understand now, but that doesn't prevent, because like, I mean, when you populate your, in your iTunes account, your music pops up onto here, I mean, all of a sudden.
So it doesn't prevent those things you would normally do, but it does prevent us being on the hook for X amount of money for something that we didn't authorize the expenditure.
I get it.
And again, how you could do that, I'll talk to you later about that.
Never mind. We don't want to know.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. We will move on to the Board Financial Report. Dr. Henson?
Be happy to answer any questions about the Board Financial Report. It's the revenues by fund, ending March 2014, and so nothing unusual, out of line, it's really different there.
Does anyone have any questions on those two reports? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to comments from the board members. Are there any comments?
I have one.
Mrs. Goodburn.
I was very fortunate to go, you know, as your board vice president, I attend the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation meetings, and I was asked to attend some of their Cash Caravan events recently where their E2 grants, their Excellence in Education grants, were awarded. And so I just wanted to report back to you who or what they awarded this year and what those grants were for. So seven grants benefiting seven schools and two district programs totaling $20,650. 2014 awards support unique initiatives for students from robotics to woodworking, social skill development curriculum to learning to play ukuleles, transportation for at-risk students to allow participation in after-school activities, and professional development for teachers piloting the elementary project Lead the Way program in three schools next year. Also, we just found out that one of last year's E2 grants that was implemented this year has won an award from the Kansas Department of Education. This is the first Excellence in Education-funded project to receive state recognition, and congratulations goes to Jason Coats. Do you all remember the Bowling Center stage, the play that was streamed online? Yes. So anyway, I just wanted to report back. It's always a very exciting day when we, they actually go out, I was invited along, and they surprise these teachers in their classrooms to, a lot of applause by the students, and they're mostly very shocked that we walk in with balloons and big checks and flowers and everything. It's a very exciting day. So I just wanted to let you all know that that happened and what the results were.
Any other board member comments? Mrs. Lovins.
I was fortunate enough to attend the groundbreaking for the Broadmoor Urban Farm. It's a, we've got t-shirts, some of us that were there, "Grown Green at Broadmoor." It's a quarter-acre farm. It's plowed, it's being planted, the students are spreading straw to keep the weeds down. It's a great project of experiential learning for the students to make this connection to where their food comes from, and it's a great, having gotten my start in parent volunteering in the school garden, I see, we saw kids eat their vegetables for the first time. So it's a great, great connection. So congratulations to Chef Bob Bressard and to all the collaborators that helped make that happen, Robert Hoffman and the whole CTE group. It was quite a day. So congratulations to them.
Other comments? Mrs. Mack.
I just, Dr. Henson mentioned end-of-the-year activities, and there are lots of banquets going on in spring sports, and Pam Hale and I are still yawning from the weekend's activities at the prom. But also, our kids are involved in spring plays. They are still finishing strong. And academically, they've got AP tests coming up, they've got finals coming up, and they're winning, we had a wrestler at Northwest win the state championship. There are just accolades coming, and I'm so glad that Dr. Henson, that you take the time to tell everybody about it, because I think it is good news for Shawnee Mission. I also wanted to recognize, Dr. Southwick is coming on and Mr. Robinson is coming on, but there's a new title of somebody who's in the room that's gonna start May 1st, and it's Mr. John Douglas. He doesn't want to be called chief, he wants to be called Mr. John Douglas. And I just wanted to, I know that there was a wonderful ceremony for you, and just wanted to recognize you, and May 1st, and I will try very hard to call you Mr. John Douglas. So chief may slip out. But I just, I mean, you've had so many wonderful years at Overland Park, and I read about the ceremony, I wasn't able to attend, and I know other people came, and, I mean, you just deserve all those accolades, and I just, again, welcome aboard.
We will not meet again until the end of May, so I will get you, Cindy, just one second here. But I just wanted to say between now and then is graduations, which is probably, I think it's the board's favorite event to attend, because that is what it's all about, you know, getting these kids successfully through and on their way into the world, into college, whatever, you know, takes them after high school. So it's a great time coming up here in a very short time. Years slipping by. Mrs. Neber.
I just would like to, again, congratulate all of the winners at the R&amp;D Forum. I know we talked about it a little bit earlier this evening, the superintendent did, but it's such a wonderful opportunity for all of our students to participate, and it's everything from art to robotics to, and some of the things that were made in the woodworking area were just, I'd love to have taken them home if I could have gotten them in my car, but they were too big to get out unseen.
You could have gotten a bow tie.
I could have, that would be my next one. But, you know, the kids put their heart and soul in it, but we have some fantastic teachers that are giving some wonderful guidance to our students and their careers in the future. So from top to bottom, it was well done, and it was a lot of fun if you had the opportunity to go.
Any other comments? Mrs. Goodburn.
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel. The meeting will convene at...
4:30.
9:00. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you all for coming this evening.
Well, I don't know whether she took...